Okay, it's currently six oh three. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are starting off with our annual organizational meeting. And at this time, I'd like to focus on the election of Board of Education Officers. So I'd like to nominate, I'd like to take a nomination for the Board President. Mary Scanlon. Is there a second? Second, Mike Marizio. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Of our failure. Take over?
Right, I'm authorized to do that without my oath. At this time, thank you, by the way. For putting your trust in me once again. I appreciate that. I'll do my best not to let you down. At this time, I entertain a motion for a Vice President of the Board. Thank you. Could I have a second? Second, Miss Scanlon. Any discussion? Being done, I just want to give a chance to raise your hand. And so I want to just play your coffee. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. What I'm going to do is going to go through, obviously, organizational meeting. What I did in my mind is like.
I'm sorry, I sort of chunked it up into portions that made sense. But please, by all means, if there's anything you need pulled out. Or in order to have it explained. Please do that. I'm not going to do the whole agenda at once, but again, I chunked it up a bit. So I would entertain a motion at this time for the appointment of the Board of Education Audit Committee. And you can see that number four, and that would be myself, the Vice President, Mr. Marizio, and Michael Schuse as a committee member, if I could get a motion, please. Motion for Miss Scanlon, second for Miss Kruger. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. For appointment of officers of the Board of Education. What I'd like to do is just take. The first two, first, if I get a motion, take five point zero one and five point zero two. That is District Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer and the District Clerk. Motion for Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Marizio. That is before us. Is there any question there? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. There is a question?
Yeah, so. Will this be amended at your retirement?
Yes.
Which, which we accepted, but is not in effect until August thirtieth, correct? Wow, I'm rushing it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for sticking around an extra month, Connie. If I could get a motion for item five point zero three, Appointment to Claims Auditor and Deputy Claims Auditor, please. Motion for Miss Kruger, second for Mr. Herman. Discussion, and I separated this one out, just to mention to the Board that this is a board hire. And we do need to do an interview. For. The Claims Auditor piece here. All right, now you see the name there, the person who is standing in. And that's just another interview we have to do after we complete what we're doing now. Okay? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. If I could get a motion, then my motion would be asking if somebody could want to combine five point zero four to five point one zero. Motion for Miss Kruger, second for Mrs. Scanlon. So we have all those items before us. They are appointments of various coordinators and compliance officers and such. I'm sure you reviewed that. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. And if I get a motion to appoint. From five point one one to five point two five, please. Motion for Mr. Marizio. Second for Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Any discussions on that? I'll make sure I didn't have a comment on something. I did want to mention, though, and that these are before us right now, but if we look at. Five point one one, and this is for the benefit of, well, Xavier, the new person, Beth is not here right now. We have four different lawyers. And I just wanted to take a minute to explain that because I didn't understand it my first couple of years. So you see we have Bond, Shennick, and King that you will see here now and then. Trespass and Markwars is our Bond Counsel. Laron Fisher is mainly for construction, and I believe for armed fear ends, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We use those if there's any conflict that occurs with the Bond, Shennick, and King. Okay. All right. So any questions on all those items before us? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. If I could take all items under six, the designations, if I get a motion, put that before us. Motion for Miss Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any questions on those items? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Those are carried. Authorizations. I thought I could group all those together when I reviewed them, so if somebody can make a motion for that. Motion for Mrs. Kruger, second from Mr. Marizio. Any questions on those? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? All items in seven are carried. And number eight, readoption of all board policies. Motion for Miss Scanlon, second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion there? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. And if I could have a motion to adjourn the organization, motion for Mr. Crabtree, second for Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Our organizational meeting is complete. If you can click on meetings and move over to our. Regular meeting of the Board. And I think we did the pledge. We don't do that again. Yeah, we haven't in the past. I don't believe. Okay. All right, then I'll call the meeting of the Board of Education to order, North Syracuse, for July, a regular meeting of July twelfth, two thousand twenty one. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence to recognize the following. Suzanne Howe DeCarlo, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Dylan Dunn, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Diane Robinson Pesca, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kenneth FMA, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And William H. Delap, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a presentation. It is the District Safety Plan. And Mr. Mr. Irwin, is that you're doing that, Mr.? Okay, great. Thank you.
So good evening. Matt Irwin sends his regards. He is on vacation. And since this. Plan is somewhat time sensitive. I'll be presenting it to you tonight. Share screen. Would need to share the screen. Okay. Sorry. In the wrong place. Got it. There we go. On vacation a week, I'm already rusty. Okay. The Safety Plan, so. Let me start out. I think it's important that we talk a little bit about our goals of having a safety plan. And they might seem obvious, but. It's critical to us that we not only have the ability to keep our students and our. And our staff safe and any community members that are on our campuses or in our buildings. But we want people to feel safe all the time. And so first and foremost, we want to instill a culture supportive of diversity and inclusion, open to all members of the community. We want people to feel safe and welcome in our buildings. Obviously, another goal is to establish and share specific strategies and tools to mitigate risk, prevent violence, and provide support for individuals in crisis. And then our goal was to develop response strategies. And it's critical that when an incident happens in our school. That. That we're able to respond quickly. But it's also, as we go through the planning process and the process of drilling, which I'll talk a little bit about, that we remain flexible. Our environments are changing, both within the school and in our community. And we have to have a mind of. A mindset of adaptation, you know, our ability to continue to support the community as best as possible. Regardless of the changing situations. And then finally, a goal was to make sure that we have a plan to recover and that we have continuity of operations in the event that there is an incident on our campuses. And New York State has very specific requirements for the district level safety plan. And that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about building safety plans at this moment. We're talking about the district level plan. And the document or the plan has to be public, and so we're presenting some information tonight. We're going to put more information on our website. This is an overview. It's intentionally limited. We don't put in the plan certain confidential information. We listed a few things here, specific prevention and intervention strategies. You know, general response protocols and policies and specific policies regarding training and drills. And certain communication information, particularly those around, you know, a direction for families during emergencies. And we specifically keep that information confidential and part of the building level plans, which are not published, so that we wouldn't enable a perpetrator. These plans are reviewed by a diverse district team, and we recently expanded our district health and safety team. So that, so that we get more eyes on our district plan. It'll be shared, as I said earlier, on our website and accessible to community members. And the district level plan serves as a guideline for our confidential building level plans, which are detailed, very detailed, and used by our administrators as a reference in responding to emergency events. As I mentioned, we're sharing the plan tonight, including it on our website, in hopes that the Board will be able to approve the plan at the start of each school year. And this year, that would be at the August twenty third meeting of the Board of Education. Some highlights of things we've added to the plan this year. Things around risk reduction, prevention, and intervention, such as. Just putting some information in there about certain programs and practices that have been in place for a while. Obviously, we've all heard of DASSA, Dignity for All Students, which is a New York mandated program. Our SRO program, which we're very proud of, and it's been very effective here at the district. We've done so much with mental health awareness, suicide prevention, and more, and we're including elements of that in the plan. Responses to violence. I think many of you have heard about Vadar, Vader, which is the Violent and Disruptive Incident Reporting System. Again, mandated by New York. And then finally, with the help of Dr. Leahy, we have incorporated our pandemic response plan, which is a new addition, but will be incorporated into the plan as a permanent addition going forward. We're going to post the plan, as I said. Anybody, it'll be indicated to folks. If they've had questions, concerns, or comments, they'll be able to email or call Matt Irwin. Certainly, anybody in my office would be available to talk about the plan as well with the community. And as I said, it'll be on the website, the thirty day comment period, asking the Board to approve it on the twenty third. And we just want to keep in mind, it's a living document. You know, we're going to welcome, we're going to welcome comments and concerns, not only from the community, but also from our staff members and families. And revisions can be made anytime, again, subject to the Board's approval. I wanted to just mention a couple of things about how this plan gets communicated and is managed within our school community. One of the, one of the most important things we do is our drills, and we do twelve drills a year. Four of them must be lockdown drills, eight of them are evacuation style drills, such as a fire drill. Eight of those drills get done before December thirty first. So. In the drilling process, where, and in building staff level meetings, where they're talking to the staff about preparation for a drill. They're really making sure that we're practicing and communicating our procedures, and then doing postmortems on, hey, what worked and what didn't? We even do it here at the district office. We do lockdowns and fire drills. And then we solicit input from the staff, and, you know, they give us some good feedback. And sometimes it's a, wow, we didn't think of that. That's good. Or, wow, that situation changed, and we need to incorporate that into our plan. So drilling is critically important. The other thing we have, we use an application called Navigate Prepared, and all of our employees have access to that on their computers and on their cell phones. And that provides a tremendous amount of information for communicating. And then finally, specialized training. And we're working to continue to incorporate some specialized training into our. Into our. You know, employee professional development, again, in an effort to further develop our staff and ready them for any event that might happen. With that, are there questions or concerns that the Board has?
I did have one. This diversity, equity, and inclusion. We all know that there was a committee that is planned to get started. Have, has anything begun in creating that?
I'll defer to Dan on that.
I'm meeting with people from SU, starting on the fifteenth, to start the, just the preliminary information and how they get started. Other districts will be doing the same. And then they'll lay out a kind of a framework of how to go about doing that.
Okay, you meant in a few days, July fifteenth, or?
July fifteenth.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Keegan. And we have no one registered to speak today. So we're going to move to Board of Education Committee Reports, which I don't believe we have any today. Okay, we're going to move to OC and BOSIS report. I don't, do we have a BOSIS report today?
Oh, yes, I have a BOSIS report. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about something else. So, real quick, I did not do a written report this month because I put it together for July and August. Because we had a short meeting the other night. But some things real quickly is that, as you know, we have eleven Board of Education members. And four were reelected. You voted as a board in April for Wayne Branson, who represents ESM. Marissa Mims, who represents FM and JD. Sean Rayburn, who represents Lafayette, Tully, and Fabius Pompey, and Luke Moreno, Homer, and Courtland. So they were induct, and is it inducting? Yeah, to take the induction into the, into BOSIS. Wayne Branson was reelected as president, and Joan Reeves from Bevo from Vice President. And yours truly is on some committees. Just to let you know, I'm the Chair of the Audit Committee on the Facilities Committee, and I'm also on the Career and Technical Committee, Advisory Committee. And the last thing is Catherine Dotton, which Dr. Leahy knows, is our new Director of Education Programs. I would ask Mr. Bowles, I was thinking about it today. We thank you, BOSIS, to do a presentation. We did it, I believe, in April. If you could put it on the agenda sometime next year, it's up to you whenever you want to do it. But I think it's, it's good for our board to see where we're going and. You know, be communicating with the BOSIS. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Superintendent Bowles, comments?
Thank you. I want to just back up because it's been a while since we've met. And I want to start out where, at the end of the school year, I challenged Mr. Irwin and Mr. Keegan with our renovation at Bear Road to really see if we could get some, some things moved up the line. And we were able to move the deadline for certain classrooms where our teachers were able to move in, starting on the twenty second into classrooms. And Mr. Keegan and I, we did a tour, and it was a huge, huge success to just be able to try to make sure there are classrooms that are already getting set up or were set up for September. So I just want to credit Mr. Irwin, Mr. Keegan on that, and the teachers of Bear Road for moving at that time. The other one I want to mention is, I want to publicly acknowledge Jamie Sullivan and the High School Administration Secretaries, Matt Irwin, with all of his crew. We had maybe, maybe ten days from an announcement of about a change in policy about graduations. And initially, we, the guidance that we had, it was broken up into two sessions. We were able to turn this big ship around to create one fabulous graduation for every single student, parent, grandparent, guardian, the community. Again, what they did was nothing short of a miracle. And it, it made a world of difference for so many students and families. Got nothing but praise for the job that they did, and it was absolutely spectacular. And again, I wanted to make sure we were publicly acknowledging the work that was done to make that possible, given the year that all of the students had. We started our BOSIS Special Ed Summer School. I walked over to the junior high the other day. Things were running really well. Things were working. And again, we have the Special Ed Summer School for the entire county housed on our campus. And we, we host that every year, and things are running well there. And we're also hosting the secondary BOSIS Summer School at our high school. And things have been working well at the high school as well. We will, as of tomorrow, start our own internal. Elementary and middle school summer school that will be starting. And we have a little more than four hundred students that should be attending. And there's a lot of things happening this summer. And again, trying to make sure we're offering opportunities for students to be successful, given the year that they've had. Those are some of the highlights. We will be getting more and more people that will be attending our meetings, probably starting on the twenty sixth. We've gotten a lot of information about people that want to speak about several issues, some that we're hearing a lot on the news, and some of the, the issues change daily. We met a superintendent this afternoon to discuss what's happening around the area. So there will be more information to follow. We'll be putting some things in the Friday Letter as a prep as we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments, if I may start with this, I just have two. And that is, in the, in the very near future. Mrs. Gibson's going to put out a question to everybody about committees you want to serve on, Board of Ed Committees. So please, when you get that, could you respond to that as soon as you can? And I'll sit down with Vice President Marizio, and we'll go through that this year and make those appointments as soon as we can. Also, in our authorizations tonight, we approved our relationships with Central New York School Boards, Aduna Madison School Boards, and NISBA, New York State School Boards Association. And they're, they have available conferences, so I just want to make the Board aware of that. Many free, some in webinar form, some who travel. Matter of fact, I, I am going to a law conference next week, and I will report back to you whatever interesting things I find or don't find interesting. And I'll try not to. Engage in any arguments with any. Legal presenters, but I've done that in the past sometimes, just to break up the monotony. Lawyers are wonderful. Not always the best presenters, but we'll hope that we have some good ones. So I want everybody to know, because we do have memberships for these organizations. I think we should take availability of whatever's there when you can. I'm not saying you have to, but it's there. And hopefully, this year, as we move forward, know, many of us have gone to the different meetings that are local when, before the world stopped, and those, I'm sure, will be opened up again. And it's really great to network with other Board members around the area. So I'm looking forward to that piece. Any other Board of Ed comments? Oh, the NISBA's, NISBA's Conference Convention is going to be in New York City this fall. It was supposed to be last year. They turned the whole thing virtual. What they're going to do, from what I've read thus far, is that they're going to, the business meeting where they debate and pass resolutions to set their agenda and their legislative program will be done virtually. They had success with that last year. They felt that's better not to have everybody in that room doing that piece. That'll be virtual, but the breakout workshops that are actually, you know, to me, pretty valuable, are going to be in person. So that is late October, but, I mean, just go to New York State School Boards Association website. You can find that. I blocked out those dates. I'm hoping to go. I'm intending to go. So I'm looking forward to that, and that's open, of course, to any School Board member. Thank you for bringing that up, because that's a, they rotate it through, and New York City is usually the bigger one. And obviously, that was off. And obviously, that was off the table last year.
So another thing that was off the table because of this terrible pandemic that hit us was I sent Dan Bowles and a message recently that we were trying very diligently and successfully to get Stephen Ritz, the Green Bronx Machine, here to begin a garden project, which can be inside or outside. He does have tower gardens. We were looking at that for our underserved communities. Maddie Dale is very interested, and I'm a part of a Facebook group of Maddie Dale, who said very specifically that they really want a garden for our kids here. Recently, our friend Stephen Ritz was honored at a worldwide, I forget the name. You may have seen it. If you could pull that up for me, that'd be great. But Sir Richard Branson was honored along with Stephen Ritz in New York City this week. So we've got a pretty powerful advocate that wants to come to this area. And hopefully, we can have that happen. And I know that Dan is searching for the name. It's W O I or something along those lines that he's looking for. But one of the wealthiest men in the world who's trying to change our universe is
He's actually, he's actually going himself, isn't he, up in this space? Oh, he went. Okay, I knew he was going.
He went up and basically, it's a nice, you know, into the atmosphere ride and come back down, and they're not orbiting, but.
The world of business ideas. W O B I.
I remembered the W O, but yeah, so we have a powerful friend who wants to come here and bring garden ideas that are wanted by the community. So hopefully, we get to see that happen.
Thank you. Yeah, interesting. Yes, yes, Bob.
Three things. First of all, Dan mentioned it, but I don't know if you realize, he's on our meets with all the superintendents. It's almost daily because of COVID, and there have been all kinds within the last week, changes. The New York School Board really didn't tell the whole truth and, you know. So, Dan, thank you so much for representing us. I know you're meeting Dr. Cook and all the others. Thank you. It's a lot of work. I'm, Mr. Cook tells us every month what you're doing. The other thing, Mr. President, is our board retreat. Our OC on BOSIS, we are now evaluating ourselves, and I would like to have that evaluation sent out to board members so we can evaluate ourselves and then set up a time that we have a retreat. I think it's important that the the board evaluate what we do, how we work with finance, how we work with the superintendent, and look at it on a yearly basis. So I hope that will happen. And the next thing, I don't want to lose my temper here, but it's the Town of Clay. I want everyone on this board, and really the audience, to know that there will be a very important meeting next Monday night, and I'll be able to go at the Town of Clay Hall. Town Hall on two things. The first one is this property that is very close to the school district, the Hindlewilds' property. Their town planning board turned it down, but the board has not. And they will be widening the road, which is Taft Road, not on our side of where the school is, but on the other side. It will affect our busing, going to the junior high. It 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 will. There's no doubt about it. It will affect traffic on Taft Road, which is, you know, you're lucky to get through this light in the morning two or three times. So just want you to know that. The other thing is the the property on 31, which Mr. McMahon has talked about. And what my concern is, the Town of Clay just recently admitted they made an error on taxes that the new solar farms will not be paying taxes. Now, this is not right. And I know, Marion, we've all talked about this, is if we want businesses in this community, but we want them to pay their school taxes, and we want them to pay their county taxes. So I I'm very disturbed that somehow they didn't do the paperwork, and these two new solar farms in the Town of Clay aren't going to pay their rightful taxes. So I plan to go to the meeting, and I'll bring back what I see. But it does involve the school district, because these are lands that will pay taxes for us. Thank you.
I don't want, I don't want to ask questions now, but I'm just curious. They will be some kind of pilot agreement, I'm assuming? If we could find that, yeah, that'd be interesting to know. And I heard you say they'll, they widen the road, but not on our side? Okay. Right. Because they widened this years ago, as you remember, and 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 there's, there's no room on the other side anymore. Yeah, wow. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll move to routine action items, and we'll take, entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the meeting of July 6 and July 7 and of June 21st. Sorry. Also, if I get a motion, motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. I get a motion. I would like to place the classifications of disabled students, B, C, and D altogether. A motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. Thank you. And a motion for E, consideration on contract award automotive supplies bid reference, motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion there? The contract automotive supplies bid reference? Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. Thank you. If I could get a motion, I'd like to group D, E, F, G, and H. These are reauthorizations. So if we could group D through H together, motion from Ms. Kruger. Oh. I didn't do A, B, and C yet. I did B. I'm sorry, I did B, C, and D. I see I have my notes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gibson. I'll go back to A. My attempt to do this in a different order has been forwarded. If I could get a motion to put A in front of us, you know, is where the appointment of the impartial hearing officer. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? That is carried. Like to take item B separately also. If I get a motion, place that before. It's motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Marizio. That's the abolishing, creating instructional staff positions. That was what we read about in the Friday Letter.
I do have, so I'm very pleased with the administration adding the family engagement specialists. I think it's going to go right along with what Terry's talking about, the garden. And I am thrilled that they're doing this poverty project. And I'm thinking that this family engagement specialist will be part of that. Am I correct? To get families involved and?
We wanted to make sure we had both family engagement specialists for each school. When we initially started out, we thought we might be able to cover with one school. But we realized that we'll need a person for each. Both schools are listed as in need. Rock's L as a CSI school, Rock's Middle as a TSI school, getting some additional funds for that kind of support. So we want to make sure there's a person that's designated for each location to be connected with the families and reaching out and coordinating things.
That does tie into the gardens, because as many of you know, or I may not know, that the closer you get to a city or an urban area, the harder it is to find fresh produce and real food. You can't find them at the convenience stores, candy bars and, you know, or McDonald's. And the gardens provide free food, free food after the initial purchase of the actual garden or the tower. That if you keep them going, this could go on for years of feeding these families and giving access to fresh fruits when, especially when schools aren't open, like summertime. And we do have energy from the canteen to jump in and help us if we need those to be, because they have to be every couple of weeks. So you have to do something to them that the canteen is willing to step in and help us when the schools are closed. So I'm very excited about moving that forward. Thank you.
All right, we have B before us. Any other comments? Seeing not all in favor? Oppose? Item B is carried. And item C, reuniversal PK updated contracts from providers. If I get a motion, place that before. It's motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. Going to once again attempt to combine items D through H. If I get a motion to place those before us, motion from Ms. Marizio, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? Those items are carried. If I get a motion for the acknowledgement of gifts under I, motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mrs. Scanlon. As you can see in the gifts, we have gifts of items of to the music department. We have something from Nagle Athletic and the Sponsor recognition program and Corps of Federal Credit Union helping us again with the hot dog cookout for the junior high school. So those are before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Yes, go ahead.
About the sponsor program, I like to see a presentation on that. Maybe Mr. Bernardsky could come in. I mean, it'd be a real quick one. How many do we have? Or maybe just a report, Dan. It wouldn't have to be something in your Friday Letter to tell us how, you know, what companies, how many there are, because I think it's growing, but I don't know that.
Thank you. Yeah, Friday, Friday Letter makes sense. Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing not all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. And surplus of non-marketable goods, if I get a motion, place that before. It's motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. Instructional personnel report A. I get a motion to place that before. It's motion from Mr. Marizio. Second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion there? I I just noticed we did have one retirement in A, and that was Nancy Zobro, a teaching assistant with 15 years of service. And any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. And please, motion please for support staff personnel report B. Motion from Mr. Herman, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Support staff B. We also have two retirements in there. We have Donald Fairman with 15 years of service and Richard Kelly with 27.7 years of service. So seeing nothing else, all in favor? I? Oppose? That is carried. And administrative personnel report C. Motion place that before. It's motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. And at this time, I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of four individuals with no action to follow. If I could get a second, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? That is carried. And just please, a motion for adjournment. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Marizio. Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Oppose? We are adjourned, 6:43. Thank you very much.